Well, welcome everyone. We're going to get underway. We're waiting for another one of our members to join us this evening. So hopefully he'll come online in the next couple of minutes, but we can get started. So welcome to this evening's planning board meeting Tuesday, November 9th, beginning at 6:00 PM via Zoom. Assume if you are here, you were able to access the meeting via the agenda and the Zoom links. If you want to participate during public comment portions of the meeting, please do so using the chat functionality of the Zoom. The Zoom feature and we will put into the chat a telephone number you can call to ask questions and also an email of the assistant planning director. If you have any comments during the meeting, you may use those methods to get in touch with us. As we get underway, I just would like to do a roll call vote on attendance. Member Crowha.
Here.
Member McCallum.
Here.
We are waiting on member Grove, I believe, still. Member Kent.
Here.
And member Connolly.
Yeah.
Who is newly with us this evening. Welcome Ms. Connolly. I think I'll go right into the old new business section and welcome you officially to the planning board as our new alternate member. We're very excited to have you. Your resume is very strong and we look forward to working with you and your input on projects and participation. I don't know if you want to say anything, but you're more than welcome to.
I'll keep my remarks brief and say thank you, and then I'm very excited to be working with the board.
Great, thank you. Um, I think the first scheduled public hearing is not until 6:15. So with that, I'm going to stay in the old new business section of our agenda for a couple more minutes. And I think I'd like to do, since we only have two, if we could, do the November zoning board of appeal recommendations.
Thank you, Madam Chair. One second. Awesome. So we actually only have one recommendation tonight. The application for 90 Mute Nav has been withdrawn. And the board will take that up at their next meeting. Petition number 21-253 Web Street. Description applicant seeks findings to construct a second story addition along a non-conforming rear yard setback. They also seek a finding to alter and extend the non-conforming rear yard setback for a proposed rear deck and two-story addition. The applicant, the staff recommendation is the applicant shall revise the architectural plans for a more aesthetically pleasing structure. Staff suggests incorporating different architectural features to the rear in front of the dwelling. Staff is recommending approval with conditions subject to revised plans. I will bring up the plans now. Give me one second, please.
Great, thank you.
Can everyone see the?
Yes.
Yep.
Um, member Crowa, do you have any comments or questions on this application?
No, I do not. Thank you.
Member McCallum, do you have any comments or questions?
I know questions.
Uh, member Kent, do you have any comments or questions?
Just the normal, have the butters weighed in on this.
I've asked for letters to support member Kent, but I have yet to be provided for them. We'll allow for the public hearing to be opened and allow for testimony from the public for that.
Okay, no other questions.
Uh, member Connolly, do you have any comments or questions?
Not at this time, thank you.
Great, thank you. I don't have any additional commentary to add on this one, Connor. So with that, Chair will entertain a motion to move forward with staff recommendation.
Thank you.
I'll move that we accept staff's recommendations.
We have a motion by member McCallum. Do we have a second?
Second.
Right, second by member Crowa. We'll do a roll call vote. All, we'll be having our alternate member vote on this one as well this evening. Ms. Conley will vote on this one. Member Crowa.
Yes.
Member McCallum.
Yes.
Member Kent.
Yes.
Member Connolly.
Yes.
And Chair votes yes as well. Alright, I think that that's it for November zoning board of appeals recommendations. Do we want, did we, everyone get a chance to review the August meeting minutes that were circulated? Does anybody have any commentary or questions, or can we get a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve minutes is drafted.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, member Crowa.
Yes.
Member McCallum.
Yes.
Member Kent.
Yes.
Member Connolly.
I have a question. I didn't attend that meeting. So would it be appropriate to vote on that?
Yeah.
The meeting minutes rock is ten.
You can, um, you don't have to.
I would abstain.
Yeah, yep. Great, thank you. And Chair, Chair votes yes. Thank you. Um. Let's see. How about, is, I guess in what's left, is there anything that staff would recommend taking up? That would be maybe a few minutes of our time before we jump into the public hearings.
Meeting schedule.
We can do the meeting schedule, Madam Chair.
Okay.
And, um, member Grove is here.
Okay.
You can turn on your video and unmute.
I can hear them. I see my panel. There I am. There he is, there he is. Okay, thank you.
Welcome, member Grove.
Thank you. Before you go too far, I'd like to ask Connor a question on the, the Newton F project.
I think we did note that that one was withdrawn.
I don't, does it become withdrawn before the ZBA accepts the withdrawal?
The zoning board of appeals has to vote to accept it.
Exactly. So it's not withdrawn at this point.
No, we're not making a recommendation and we're not.
Let me, can they put it back on the table?
Excuse me?
Can, can the applicant put it back on the table?
What table? The zoning board's table?
Can they refuse? Yeah, can they revoke the the withdrawal that they sent to Connor?
Um, I guess they could.
Okay, now is there any timing issue if their application was extended at the next meeting? To the December meeting?
If they request a continuance till December?
Can the zoning board continue it? Never mind whether they asked for.
Um, they have 100 days to render the decision. We'd have to look at the clock. We didn't prepare, we don't prepare that type of information for this meeting, member Grove.
I understand.
You know, another board this evening with this board.
Well, at a minimum, I think we ought to request that if they, if it gets put back on the table, that we be informed so we can do our trust participation.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Alright, thank you. Um, alright, well, it is 6:15. So let's start with our first public hearing this evening, which is, which is for 250 Granite Street, which is the South Shore Plaza. It's a special permit and site plan review, a major modification filed number 8-03. LT Brain Tree Leasehold LLC is our applicant. This is a new public hearing. So I could please request that staff reads into the record the notice for public hearing and then we can get underway.
If I may, Madam Chair, notice is given by the planning board under the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Sections 9 and 11, and the Braintree zoning by law, Chapter 135, Articles 5, 6, 7, and 14. That a public hearing will be conducted remotely via Zoom on Tuesday, November 9th, 2021 at 6:15 PM. In accordance with Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order, as most recently amended, said order suspended the provisions of the open meeting law to promote public health and social distancing. This public hearing will not be conducted in an open, publicly accessible place. Instead, public access to the hearing will be achieved by adequate alternate means that allow the public to follow the proceeding and a communication technology that's readily accessible to the public via the internet and telephone. And then we insert the Zoom link as well as the phone numbers and webinar ID. The planning board will consider a major modification, a special permit and site plan review decision 03, excuse me, 0803 filed by LT Braintree Leasehold LLC. The applicants proposing to modify the decision to allow for a use special permit for office park within the former Lord &amp; Taylor. 118 plus or minus 118,000, excuse me, plus or minus square feet. The property is located 250 Granite Street, contains 111 plus or minus acres, is zoned with highway business. It is shown on the Braintree assessor's plan. 2089 is spots 21 and 22. And then instructions to view the applications and visit the department are also provided. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Great, thank you very much. Who do we have on behalf of the applicant with us this evening?
Uh, we have a whole entourage here. We have Diego is the traffic person. Jess is the lead from Goldstone Stores. Uh, and then we have Mary Ann and also Jose, who are representatives of the leasehold entity.
Great, thank you. Is, I guess, who is going to be leading the presentation this evening? And will you be also sharing a screen or presenting any plans?
Sure. One piece, Mary Ann, I don't think is associated with our team.
Sorry.
That's okay, that's okay.
I thought you had one more person.
We do. It's Ian Turnquist is our, yes. So Mary Ann, we will not kick those questions to you. So Diego, I think, was going to be presenting, so I'm not sure if you have screen sharing capability now or?
Um, I think as a panelist, you should be able to share, but.
I do. I'm going to share right now. Just start the presentation. If you guys can just confirm that you can see my screen.
Great.
Thank you.
Perfect. Madam Chair, okay if we begin?
Yes, please.
Madam Chair, members of the board, first, we just wanted to thank you for taking the time to hear our requests this evening. For the record, my name is Jessica Camano. I'm here tonight from Goldstone and Stores as counsel on behalf of the applicant, which is an affiliate of Hudson's Bay Company. We're here tonight seeking to modify the existing special permit and site plan review decision that governs the entire South Shore Plaza. More specifically, we're seeking to clarify the allowed uses at the former Lord &amp; Taylor building site. As our client is interested in a retenanting, as you may know, that building is currently vacant and has been since about December of 2020. And there is interest in introducing a new mix of uses, including office park, which is a special permit use. So joining me tonight, as we just went over briefly, is Nito Dos and Jose Gonzalez from Hudson's Bay Company, who will be able to speak a bit more to the vision to re-tenant and reinvigorate the space. Diego Villarreal, who's currently running the presentation, is also joining us from JMC Planning and Engineering. And Diego will be able to speak a bit more to the specific modifications that we're proposing. At a high level, it's really primarily typical interior tenant fit out work that would come with any re-tenanting, as well as some limited exterior work, such as landscaping or the addition of windows. Really minor work at this time. There's nothing anticipated to increase the building footprint or any sort of site massing. So we really don't anticipate any major impacts on surrounding infrastructure or utilities, but Diego can speak to that a bit more. And finally, joining us is Ian Turnquist from Highland Architecture and Engineering, to the extent that there are any more specific design questions. I did want to take a moment, though, to pause at the outset and kind of set the table that we're here in a pre-permitting capacity tonight. It is not the case that we have specific tenants lined up to fill the former Lord &amp; Taylor building. Rather, Hudson's Bay Company is beginning the marketing process in trying to secure new and dynamic, exciting tenants to bring into this space once we've confirmed that a mixed use would be allowed here. And in that process, out of an abundance of caution, wanted to be certain that under the existing permitting, we would be able to bring in, you know, general office, medical office, office park to supplement the retail and restaurant at the site. So that's why we're here tonight. We don't have any, you know, very building specific plans. Pretty much everything that we'll show tonight is conceptual, as we're here really to focus on the uses that are allowed at the site. So in a moment, I'll speak at a very high level about the existing conditions and the zoning that currently apply to the site. I'll then turn it over to Nito to talk a bit about the design goals and objectives for the adaptive reuse of this site and sort of what Hudson's Bay is envisioning. Then Diego will step in to speak, as I mentioned, a bit more to the actual modifications that are being proposed and any impacts that we might expect from the same, and then we anticipate opening it for questions and comments. So as I had mentioned, this site is currently governed by the existing special permit that applies to the entire South Shore Plaza Mall. We understand that the planning director has been in contact with the holder of that special permit with respect to this request, and that coordination will continue until this is closed out. As you may have seen as well on our application materials, the holder of the special permit, you know, the kind of the fee owner of the mall, Simon Property Group, has also signed off on our application itself, is certainly aware of our request to re-tenant and expand the uses allowed at the Lord &amp; Taylor site and is in support of the proposal. Again, we're here tonight to request a modification of that existing special permit to clarify that's specific to the Lord &amp; Taylor building site. In addition to the retail and restaurant uses that are allowed, office uses, including medical, as well as office parks, given the amount of square footage and the size of the building, are also allowed at the Lord &amp; Taylor site in order to allow for a pretty innovative and interesting reuse of what is currently or was currently a single retail use before it went vacant. I note that Hudson's Bay Company is a long-term ground lessy of this Lord &amp; Taylor building site. So that is Simon Property Group, who runs the mall, does actually own the building. However, Hudson's Bay Company controls it by way of a long-term lease. As such, everything that we're proposing tonight to sort of vary the uses that are allowed is specific to the Lord &amp; Taylor building site, as generally shown here in red and as will be talked about a bit later. But that anything that would extend to areas outside of that site, for example, parking or any common areas to the mall, would require coordination and consent of the fee owner. With that, I'll turn it over to Nito to give a bit more detail on the vision of Hudson's Bay Company to reuse and revitalize the site.
Thank you, Jessica. Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you for having us today. Truly appreciate your time. We have been members of the community for over 42 years and quite unfortunate that the Lord &amp; Taylor had filed for Chapter 11, but we ended up with a box that's almost 120,000 square feet. And unfortunately, we, there's not necessarily a market for a department store to come back and fill the box. So we're looking for avenues in order to reinvigorate and yet complement the uses within the mall without necessarily having to compete with the sales of the mall. So one of the issues that we're, you know, we're looking at right now is basically what to do with it. And, you know, the quick and obvious answer is it's not going to be necessarily retail, but we're looking for an office component to come in here. And, you know, whether it be medical or there be professional office, we're also hoping to have a an FMB possibly that may come into the site, as well as have a portion of it as a retail. So we're looking of the mixed uses to come in on board and basically complement and supplement the, uh, the retail use within the, within the mall itself. And that's really basically it. The impact on the mall, whether it be from a traffic or whether it be from a parking should be minimal, if any. You know, with that, I'll turn it to Diego.
Thank you, Nito. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Diego Villarreali with JMC for the record. As Jessica and Nito indicated, we're the planning and engineering consultants that have been working with Nito and Jose and their team on several of these locations across the country. We've had an opportunity to truly, really work with them on trying to replan and reinvigorate these spaces and get creative on how we can reoccupy these big boxes, 118,000 square feet. You know, single tenant occupant and now trying to recreate those different spaces has obviously provided some challenges. But working with the team, you know, there is a plan in place to try to reintroduce these alternate and additional uses to complement all of the other uses within the building itself. So, um, just real quick, this is a site plan that was included in the package that was submitted. And obviously, we are speaking about the Lord &amp; Taylor portion of the building that's highlighted in this red box. This is that lease area that Jessica referred to under the Lord &amp; Taylor control. The building itself is about 67,000 square feet. The footprint, we are two stories totaling about 118,000 square feet just under. The two main access points that you can see to the building itself are on the southern and western side of the building. And then there's the interior mall connection into the building itself. The two primary parking fields are located to the south and to the east, I should say, the surface parking fields that are adjacent to the main entrances of this portion of the building. As Nito had indicated, the intention is to introduce really that office component into the building itself. And we have a couple of floor plans that would show you how we would break apart those different spaces. But the office use is really the primary focus to be introduced into the building and then have a retail and a food and beverage component in there as well. The split based on the plan that we shared with you is about an 85-10-5 split, meaning 85% is dedicated to that office space, about 10% is dedicated to some type of retail user. Whether, you know, different types of uses obviously can fall under that retail use and then some food and beverage use. These are fluid as we get tenants and as things come become reality with the tenants that would occupy these spaces, some of this might move around a little bit, but that was the general split that we were targeting when we looked at the building. Proposed modifications to the building itself, interior renovations is primarily what's going to happen here. You know, to accommodate the new tenants within the building itself. Window installation, you saw earlier from the existing picture on the building. You know, the building itself lacks any type of windows that allow natural light and air within to the space. If, you know, bringing in that office component, whether it be medical office or regular office, would require a significant amount of, you know, windows installation, something to bring natural light and air into the building itself. And then landscaping, you could see on this exhibit itself, there's, you know, the green spaces in and around the perimeter of the building. Once we introduce the window components, there's modifications that would be needed to the landscaping. It gives us an opportunity to freshen up all of the landscaping in and around the perimeter of the building itself. These are the floor plans that were included in the application. Again, just, it's really conceptual in nature. These are not detailed floor elevations to show you the exact wall location. It's just to give you an idea of the proportions that are being contemplated. The ground floor plan is shown right here, and you could see the surface entrances to the parking lots to the south and to the west. The gray area indicates the approximate area that would be dedicated to the office space. The bluish purple color here is really what would be the retail space. And then the food and beverage components would be in an area of this as well. Again, just to show the different balances. The second floor of the building itself was really contemplated to be dedicated to that food, to that office user and would make up the balance of the 85,000 square feet. As part of our application, we did do a traffic analysis that primarily focused on trip generation characteristics. We really looked at just the comparison between the existing building use and how it would be compared and looked at to the proposed uses, including the office and the food and beverage components. And generally, what we found was an overall decrease in the vehicular trips, especially during that peak PM and that peak Saturday hours when the, the mall is expected to be at its busiest times during those evening and weekend hours. And then during the AM somewhat expected, we see an uptick in the vehicular traffic because the mall is primarily closed with the exception of a few uses within the building itself. You know, there's very limited traffic coming to and from the mall at that time. As Ms. Santucci indicated in her planning staff analysis there, you know, so the way we looked at the existing use within the building, we looked at it as a department store. We probably should have looked at it as a shopping center use because it is part of an overall center. But it actually resulted in a conservative analysis with what we did. And we showed a smaller reduction, and it actually could be an even greater reduction in the vehicular trips when you do look at it as that shopping center use. Regardless, we would expect no adverse impact, no overall negative impact on traffic operations simply because we're incorporating that office use, which is traditionally a little bit lower of an, a generator of traffic when you look at it from a trip generation standpoint. And then the adequacy of the existing parking will continue to rely on the surface parking and the parking that surrounds this building. There's more than adequate. Obviously, we exceed the zoning requirements in your code, and there's adequate parking that we would rely on to support the building itself. This is a conceptual artistic rendering of the building itself, just to give you an idea of the different window penetrations that could be incorporated into the building. Obviously, when a tenant comes in, there would be specific requirements to that tenant themselves. The window configuration could be different depending on the users themselves. But the intention, I think, is what we're trying to show you here is that rather than just a solid wall, the idea is to incorporate windows and other openings to bring that natural light and air into the building itself. And again, just to summarize, you know, revitalization of the vacant space, again, trying to occupy 118,000 square feet with a department store, those opportunities are few and far between. So we really need to get creative with different ways to do that, and we believe that this is accomplishing that goal. Diversification of the uses itself, more than just one user, anything we can do to increase the diversification, we believe would be a positive to the mall itself. Consistency with your zoning and planning goals. Again, we're not asking for variances. We're not asking to try to introduce new users that are new uses that are not permitted in your code. Everything that we're proposing at this time, we believe fits well within the planning strategies initiated by the municipality. And then no material impact on the site plan itself and the infrastructure. That was a big piece of this, too. We're not looking to make significant modifications to the infrastructure. We're trying to work within the building footprint itself and continue to rely on the infrastructure that's there to support the building. And we believe we can accomplish that by incorporating these uses into the building itself. So that really wraps up my portion of it. Happy to answer any questions, thoughts, comments that the board may have at this time. Again, we're excited to push this forward and try to reoccupy and reinvigorate the space.
Great, thank you very much. I think before we jump into board comments, member comments and comments from the public, I would just like to take an opportunity to have an update from Director Santucci Razi, if she's presenting on this one, just kind of overall how we are doing on the staff side, department side of things.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Just looking, I think we might have lost, um, member Connolly. I'm just going to re-promote her. I saw her come in as an attendee. And if you wouldn't mind removing the, um, the share screen, Diego.
Absolutely.
Much. Okay, great. So yes, Madam Chair, um, the Goldstone Stores and engineering and leasehold team did a great job summarizing this project, and I use the word project. They filed an application. This is a perfect opportunity to allow for some re-tenanting. Our bylaw unfortunately has two different categories. When we look at office and then we look at something called an office park. In the event that they do occupy over 50,000 square feet with an office tenant or office tenants, then we're going to be in a special permit scenario. I need to let the board know that this is a very cautious approach from the staffs. We've discussed this with our assistant solicitor, and we thought that just issuing the special permit or supporting the special permit, at least the staff administration for this particular application, was just a cleaner and a more sort of transparent way to start to morph the plaza into, into something, into something really great. So a couple of other things I wanted to mention, there has been some discussions with LT Leasehold Braintree LLC and Goldstone Stores. And it's important to note this evening for the board and those, those at home watching, medical office is a use by right and could occupy this building, this entire building without a special permit. That is also something that there has been some interest in, and we would like, we would also be enthusiastic about something like that. And then the ancillary retail and restaurants and things like that, those are all by right. They could essentially re-tenant this building with all retail and restaurants, and that would. This building with all retail and restaurants and that would fall under the sort of the mothership special permit. I believe Darren McComme was on the board when we cleaned this all up in two thousand and eight and sort of wrote this master governing permit. And we have a whole variety of different plans and things here on record, so. What I did, there's nothing here to complicate, it's very, very straightforward. I took the as-built conditions from the oh eight oh three permit and people are probably wondering why I. Skipped numbers and jumped all around and that was intentional folks. And just really trying to mirror those two. Taking what regulates the plaza and the ongoing activity at the plaza and then sort of lumping the office park into those conditions. Is what I've presented to the applicant, to the board. And also shared with Simon Properties as the members of the board know and maybe some of the public or maybe people weren't here with us last month. We also had an application from Simon Properties. Braintree Properties LLC to adjust the parking ratios at the mall. And the timing of this really worked out very well, we have been in discussions with Hudson Bay for a while. And we did have some initial questions about parking and different ratios, but that's all been cleared up, so. That decision was filed last week and was on record with the town clerk. And then this is a modification further of the oh eight oh three decision and includes those parking modifications as well. So I did want to make one comment on Diego's testimony. And that the trip generation memo that was prepared was very conservative, they could have in fact used. Different land use categories for the existing baseline volumes that are generated from the social plaza now. Which would have produced almost double the amount of trips and then they could have taken that deduction from that, but. The reality is, is we're gonna see a few more trips in the morning, just because the plaza. Has doesn't have a lot of businesses that are open in the morning, you might get some employees trickling in, you might get some walkers, I know they do the walking at the plaza. And then we'll have this office tenant, but the good part is it's going to reduce the PM and the Saturday trips, which are really, really the trips that. Have been a concern of the town and things that we've been mitigating in the past during previous proposals, so. Planning staff isn't support, excited about this, these are things that we've been talking about, these are things that we've been. Sort of waiting for and it couldn't be a better opportunity. Given the modifications to the parking as well, so I'm available for any questions, follow up. And I have the draft conditions, if the board is comfortable moving this evening, I respectfully request that you consider those, thank you, Madam Chair.
Great, thank you very much and just a note to attendees or anyone in the audience who may wish to comment, this is a public hearing, the public comment is open. So if you have any comments or questions and you're a member of the public, please alert us. Via chat, raise your hand via the Zoom function. Here and I will make sure to get your commentary heard. With that, I'm going to start with board members, Member Crowha, do you have any comments or questions on this application?
No questions really, I looked everything over, I think that the mixed uses would be great at the mall, I think if that works out. If the retail works out, that's one thing, but I think we're seeing shopping centers going in more of a mixed use trend. So I think that it makes a lot of sense to update the special permit. Language to allow for that use specifically to make it a little bit easier with attracting tenants and a more streamlined process going forward. It's sort of surprising to me with Braintree having such a. Narrow definition of what's allowed in a shopping center. And so I think that, you know, this, we're looking at one application, I think it makes a lot of sense, but I think that. This type of thing is happening in a lot of shopping centers, so. That's just my really only comment, I don't have any questions with that.
Great, thank you, Member McComme, any comments or questions?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with Member Crowa's observations, I do have a few questions. My first one is, of course, not that I should know, but I did not know that. You know Hudson's Bay was a leaseholder of this property from Simon. And I just want to confirm, you know, for stability purposes that. And I think it was mentioned by their attorney, but just just for the record. That this relationship is going to continue, so we, again, we will have some stability in the ownership.
Through you, Madam Chair, this is a long-term leasehold interest, this is not your typical three-year in and out situation. The Lord and Taylor has occupied here, I think, for over forty years at this point and there is still a decent amount of time left on the ground lease, so. For stability sake, it is, they effectively operate as though they control the site.
Very good, thank you. And does Simon have? Do they have a say about which tenants, so if you if you have a prospective tenant, for example. Does Simon have the final say about whether that tenant can or cannot occupy?
If I may. Simon does necessarily have a say, however, we have a joint venture with Simon. That this would need to be presented to them in order to get final approval on it. But we already also have an omnibus agreement with Simon that allows all the permitted uses.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm sorry, I'm just gonna address your your other comments if you don't mind. Our long-term lease on here takes us to twenty eighty-five. So we're on for quite some time, if you will.
Yeah, that's that's a long time. Okay, thank you, sir. This this might be a question for the director. To what extent. Our additional. Reviews or permits or whatever in the future going to happen, meaning. If we approve this, do they effectively, they can change the space, they can. You know, have who they want, I'm not, I'm not, another item is, I'm not familiar with any food and beverage there now. Is that gonna trigger some other review in the future and. You know, for example, if a tenant comes in. As the engineer pointed out, they may want a different set of windows. So how is that gonna work in terms of the design? And then, you know, another example would be if you have medical there. You know, let's say they they have to have the ambulances. Are we gonna have to, you know, have something in the future to review that or can they make all these changes? And you know, can and if tenants change, can they just change the inside? Without any any more meetings, I know that's a lot of stuff, but I'm just, you know, what does this cover and what what potentially could we see in the future, maybe it's nothing.
No, I don't, if I may through the chair, I don't think it's a lot, Member McComme. I have draft condition number four that requires them to submit building interior and exterior plans, elevations, floor plans, exterior lighting. And landscaping plans to the department before that happens, so. Again, we don't, the we don't, we don't have jurisdiction over the tenants, we have jurisdiction over the uses. But we do have. Site plan review on sort of the periphery of of the building and of course, we would just want interior plans to be able to track that. And have those on record, so I've written that up that they come back to the board under an agenda item. And we get a look at those things, I mean. No disrespect to anybody here, anything's an improvement, you know, and even the minor drawings that they've shown. They really don't own much beyond the building footprint, so the parking lot is pretty. If they wanted to switch some things around in the parking lot, we would, we would obviously work with Simon and work with them on that and get that on a plan. But at a bare minimum. These types, the things that I had mentioned related to this specific building, they're going to come back and show the planning board and they've all along. Peter Tam, who works with Jess from day one is like, when we have something, we'll come and show it to you. They want to be able to have this special permit to be able to say to somebody, yeah, special office is allowed there, you know, get us your plans, what the what's the place gonna look like and. And let's go, we get into modifying parking, if they have to put in other loading facilities and stuff. That would be a minor modification to the to the to the record set of plans for the plaza. And we would take a look at those layouts, I don't anticipate that, but but you never know. But nonetheless, they will be coming back with a more finite set of drawings.
Okay, so for example, is is any food and beverage?
Food and beverage is allowed, food and.
Okay. Fast food, for example.
All of that, all of that can come and go, again, if it's, you know, if it's if it's something that is. Specific to, you know, if it's like a cafeteria or something like that, specific to the user. That's allowed if they want to put, I don't want to use brand names, but if they want to put a burger joint or a fried chicken place or Chinese food or Italian food. Any kind of a fast food, fast casual, fancy schmancy, that's all allowed. That stuff's already all allowed at the plaza, it's really just that office component, but. They're gonna come in with a plan of the building, you know, show us what's going where and. We don't have any any authority per se over those food and uses and stuff, but. We do over, you know, the outside of the of the of the building and egress and walking and sidewalks and paths and landscaping and lighting, so. Try to just pull in the things that we typically have concerns about and we'll take a look at those and we have when they have those plans. That's draft condition number four for the board and the public.
And I think somebody brought it up, but you know, another trend is shared office spaces. So is, would would that be allowed, for example?
Yep.
That would be, okay.
Yep.
All right. Okay, I'm all set, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Member McComme, Member Grove, any comments or questions?
Yes, ma'am, Melissa. And the parking requirements, medical office. Is at a higher rate than the. Than the plaza activities. Makes me believe that you probably see a higher volume. Of traffic. I'm wondering whether. You know, if we're not gonna. Keep an eye on the interior use of the building, whether the traffic shouldn't have been done at a higher rate, you know. Plan. Sorted out as a medical office building.
I'm not sure I understand the question, Member Grove.
Well, right now it's being taken as a general office building, which has less. Actually, less. Parking requirements.
Now, the parking requirement for office is four and the parking requirement for the social plaza is four. They're the same.
Then I'm looking at a different part of the bylaw, I'm seeing. Four for the offices and I'm seeing five for the plaza, no?
No, we just, we just had a meeting last month and set the parking ratio for the social plaza four per thousand. That happened at the last meeting.
Right, I I understand that, but what I'm saying is. The medical office was one for one hundred and fifty square feet.
Correct, and that's it, we when we made the vote last month and the materials that were provided to the board include all of those uses. So we're dealing with a very large property with a very large number of parking spaces. And a lot of parking spaces that are in excess that are not used.
I understand that, but what I'm saying. What I'm saying is if the parking. Requirements are higher. I'm making possibly wrongly that. The traffic volumes would be higher for the medical office.
Parking and traffic are two different things, they're in front of us for a special permit for an office park, not for medical, medical is a by right use. They provided the information in support of the requests that they've they've put into the board. So they have not provided information for medical office because that's not what they're asking the board for this evening.
Putting medical office in there.
I I don't know that. They they don't know that either.
All set, Madam Chairman.
Great, thank you, Member Grove, Member Kent, any comments or questions?
When I first looked at this, I was curious as to why we were dealing with. Hudson's Bay Company instead of with Simon Property Group, but I I think that's been explained here, so I'm good, I'm all set, thank you.
Thank you, Member Kent, Member Connolly, any comments or questions?
Thank you, thank you to the presenters, the parcel is like particularly well situated, I think, for this use within the Simon campus and I thank you for the thought you put into your presentation.
Thank you, Member Connolly. I just had two comments, questions, one being with regards to this modification. Does the use of, if the vote is made to allow office use, office park use. For this particular lease area, does it then in turn apply to the entire plaza, like if Nordstrom went away, would Office be able to go in as a result of this decision?
This decision, Madam Chair, it's interesting because when I was writing it. I was kind of asking myself the same thing, but they only sought permission for the. Former Lord and Taylor, so that's all that this is is related to. So, you know, if there was, there was other types of ideas or potential in other parts of the mall. We would seek, they would need to seek a modification. Of this special permit to increase those those areas, you know, I I'd like to. Hope that this is a catalyst that if if they're able to attract something, that there might be more. More of those types of uses to come, but you know, we'll have to just wait and see. And deal with that one and if we're in constant discussions with Simon Properties, as you know, when they were here last month. They're trying to, you know, kind of. Diversify as much as they can as well, so if they do branch out into this. Office park category, then we can include that area in the special permit at that time.
Okay, that's helpful, so definitely sets precedence, but it's not an automatic application to the entire mall property. And then my other question was just related to, I noted on the site plan drawings provided by the applicant that the lease area is just exclusive to the building. And I didn't know if there was any reason to or any particular reason why you did or did not include parking, like. I guess, is there any? Any problem with a lease area for that to not include parking, like I know it's part of the campus parking, but the lease area is just the building.
Yeah, it doesn't have any parking.
Okay, that's a norm, that's a normal thing.
This is, I don't know how normal this is, like to Tom's point, it's just kind of weird that, you know, there's a sort of a separate. You know, this this lease agreement that's wow, two thousand eighty-five, I mean, I knew it was long term, but that's really long term. Yeah, it's just the lease line just runs, you know, just outside the perimeter of the building.
And if I may through you, Madam Chair, there are separate agreements that handle the parking rights as allocated to this use, so there are, you know, there are rights that are set forth, they're not handled through that lease, but there are parking rights that run with with the use.
Yeah, that's where my question was going, thank you.
Okay.
All right, I don't have any other comments or questions, again, it's a public hearing, so I'm just gonna look, see, have we received any commentary, has staff received any emails or questions? Do we have anybody in the audience?
Just for the record, I haven't received anything, I've been sitting here waiting, just popping up anything, I've had no, no emails or anything or in the chat here tonight for this.
All right. Any attendees with a hand raised, all right. Do we have, yep. We have attendee Steve Sasha with his hand raised. Nope, not hand raised. Go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman and members of the board. I I just wanted to, I feel like we've just had this conversation, but I wanted to reiterate some points that I raised. At the special permit hearing last month. First and foremost, I do understand that Hudson Bay is not responsible for the entire property. But if Simon is committed to this project. I do feel like the the board could have modified the special permit last month. To take another look at the buffer zone, which continues to be a sore point for residents. To take another look at the buffer zone, which continues to be a sore point for residents. It, it is something that could be accommodated through the use of the residential properties that they acquired with. Little impact to the overall uh plaza property. And I would hope that this board would um encourage Simon to come to the table and discuss that. Now as part of this project, because if, if every project. That comes along, that's deemed to be not relevant to the particular project, nothing will ever be done on it. The second thing that I wanted to bring up was traffic, which was raised last month as well. Now I see this traffic report and. The data in this traffic report is over ten years old. That in and of itself might not be a big concern, but if you look at table B in this report, you will see. Um, the difference between peak Saturday midday hours and peak weekday PM hours on Lakeside Drive and Walnut Street. Is a fifty percent difference, eighty-five um. Eighty-five cars per hour versus a hundred and thirty. This does not say what the impact of the increased traffic in the AM hour will be. But Lakeside Drive and Walnut Street was never intended to be a driveway for an office park. So unless there is some assurance that the increase in AM traffic. Will not be adversely impacting Lakeside Drive and Walnut Street. I, you know, I would hope that, that the board would. Would require, at the very least, the petitioner to. Look at that and make sure that's not going to be negatively impacted, but I would say combined with the ten-year-old data being used here. This is screaming peer review. Somebody should make sure that this is not going to um cause a problem for the residents that live behind the mall. And it's not clear from this analysis that that's the case. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't know if there is anybody from the applicant, on the applicant's side that could speak to some of the comments made. Um, on the traffic in particular.
Hi, yes, of course. I mean, we could touch on that quickly. The, the information, again. That was presented in the traffic analysis, we need to break it down to a couple of different things. One was. It was really focusing on the trip generation characteristics and the comparison between the different uses and how. Those um uh, traffic volumes relate to each other. And again, um, when we look at the different uses during the AM hour as compared to the PM and the Saturday hour. There is um, uh, additional vehicles that would be contemplated during that peak AM hour, just because of the nature of the use. But again, it's still substantially lower, far lower than any traffic that would be experienced. During the PM or Saturdays hours. Um, even when you add the additional traffic during that peak AM hour. It is still far below what is shown and what is experienced during the PMs and Saturday hours, even on the center itself. The information that was utilized, again, was just to provide a comparative analysis. We understood that it was. Uh, record information that was done with the original application here, and it was simply used just to show the comparison. Between those different hours. And um, uh, again, I can't reiterate it enough. It's, yes, we will see a slight increase in vehicular trips during the peak AM hour, but it's still far less than what's experienced out there. During those other hours in the daytime, or excuse me, in the evening and on the weekends. So um, i- it's not the intention to, you know, create any negative impact, and that's why we believe we concluded. That we would not have a negative impact in any way whatsoever. The vehicle trips, again, during that peak AM hour, it's just so few and far between. In and around the shopping center.
Thank you. The Lakeside Drive and Walnut Street location, is that? Is that, I would, is that over by the, the Flaherty School? Is that the intersection that, that they're talking about and that?
It's the neighborhood um behind the school and then Walnut is um a road that people use. Coming from west to cut over behind um the plaza and to get onto the highway or access other areas with avoiding five corners and things like that.
Okay. Is there any other comments from the public? Any other board comments? Anybody on the board have any, any other comments? You can wave your hand off. See anybody? Um, so we have this evening, um, we do have the draft conditions uh that staff had prepared. And I believe uh, those were circulated to the applicant. Does the applicant have any comments or questions if the board decides to forward with those? Any commentary to add on that, or does that look alright?
Um, we've been in connection with um Director Santucci Rosie, and I think the only thing we noted is that um, the conditions have also been set to Simon Property Group. As the fee owner, so of course, um, before those can go to, to record or be fully finalized, we would just sign off there as well, but I know we've already spoken. With the director about that, and I know that they have also received copy for their review.
Okay, great, thank you. Um. So I'm not seeing any more uh public, public comments. Um, I don't know if the staff has received any, I think if there isn't any. We can um. We can move to close the public hearing. I just want to note that this evening, the voting members. Um, on this application will be Member Crowe, Member McComey, Member Grove, Member Kent, and um, myself as chair. So with that, um, Cheryl entertained a motion to close the public portion of this meeting, this hearing.
Madam Chair, I'll move to clo- uh, close the public hearing.
Great, um, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Kent, roll call vote, Member McComey.
Yes.
Member Crowe.
Yes.
Member Kent.
Yes.
Member Grove.
No.
This is to close the public hearing, you want to leave it open?
Yeah.
Okay, and Chair votes yes to close the public hearing. Um, we need a motion to enter into correspond, enter uh into the record correspondence through. The most recent date. Is there anything beyond the fifth of November?
There is not, Madam Chair.
Alright, we need a motion to enter into the record correspondence through the fifth of November.
Madam Chair, I'll move to uh accept the correspondence.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Kent, uh, roll call vote, Member Crowe.
Yes.
Member McComey.
Yes.
Member Grove.
Yes.
Member Kent.
Yes.
And Chair votes yes as well. Um, at this time, Cheryl entertained a motion on this application.
Madam Chair, I'll, I'll make a motion uh. To accept or approve um special permit and site plan review, major modification. File number oh eight oh three um. Two fifty Granite Street, Social Plaza LT Branch Release Hold LLC.
We have a motion by Member McComey. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Member Kent, uh, roll call vote, Member Crowe.
Yes.
Member McComey.
Yes.
Member Grove.
No.
Member Kent.
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Thank you very much uh for your presentations this evening. Um. Let's follow up with staff as necessary to um, if you have any, you know, closing, finishing up the paperwork on your end and their end.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for your time, and we really look forward to reinvigorating the site here and continuing to work on this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Take care.
Good evening.
Thank you. Um, the next item on our agenda is Town Council Order twenty-one dash zero five four. The zoning bylaw amendment, which is removal of. BZB Section one thirty-five dash four oh seven E, Planning Board and Zoning Board of Appeals is the co-applicants. Um, as some of you may be familiar, this um bylaw amendment is related to um. The Zoning Board of Appeals recommendations that the planning board hears in our old new business section of our agenda. We had spoken about this uh potential bylaw amendment several months ago, and we had uh voted on moving it forward. To Town Council. Um, I believe it is coming up on Town Council's agenda. Um, so is this, is this something we have to act on this evening? Or is this an update to what's going on?
Uh, this is a public hearing, um, Chair, so we do have to read in a legal notice, um, and we do have to make a recommendation. To the Town Council.
Alright, great. So with that, um, let's have, if staff could read into the record, the notice for public hearing, and we can open up the public hearing. And be underway.
Absolutely. Thank you. Uh, notice is given by the Planning Board under the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-eight. Sections five and eleven in the Braintree zoning bylaw, chapter one thirty-five, article. For an article fifteen that a public hearing be conducted remotely via Zoom on Tuesday, November ninth, twenty twenty-one at six fifteen PM. In accordance with Governor Baker's March twelve, twenty twenty order as amended. Said order suspended the provisions of the open meeting law to promote public health and social distancing. Public hearing will not be conducted in an open and publicly accessible place. Instead, public access to the hearing will be achieved by adequate alternative means that allow the public to follow the proceeding in a communication technology. As readily accessible to the public via the internet and telephone. The meeting link was posted along with the hearing notice as well as the telephone number, mobile number ID. Uh, the planning board will provide a recommendation to Town Council on Order twenty-one dash zero five four. Co-sponsored by the Braintree Plan Board and Braintree Zoning Board of Appeals. Said order is a zoning bylaw text amendment related to Article four, non-conforming structures and uses, variances of the Braintree zoning bylaw. Said amendment proposes to remove Section one thirty-five dash four oh seven E. To review the text amendment, please visit Town Clerk or Department of Planning and Community Development. In Town Hall at one JFK Memorial Drive on Monday, Wednesday and Thursday from eight thirty AM to four thirty PM. Tuesday from eight thirty AM to seven PM and Friday, eight thirty AM to one PM, or on the town's website under Planning Board Current Applications. That's it.
Thank you very much. Um, so. As we just noted, this is a public hearing, so if there is anybody from the audience who would like to participate, please do use some of the Zoom functionalities. To alert us of your question, and we'll call on you and make sure that we can get your commentary heard. Um, I don't know the best way, uh, I don't know if there's like a summary. From staff beyond the public notice that's worth jumping into, and then we can talk to board members, maybe that makes the most sense. Um. I have my own, you know, version of history on it, since I've been on the board since twenty fifteen, and it's kind of evolved over the years, and um, so I, I think. Just maybe an update overview from staff on how we got here. It doesn't have to be too, 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 too detailed, but just enough to kind of set the stage. And we can talk to members.
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so back in the spring, we discussed this proposal. Um, between the planning board and the zoning board of appeals. I did forward the minutes between both boards um that did vote to proceed. With the removal of this bylaw, uh, this portion of the bylaw, I would say. Um, past that, staff has worked on a narrative. Um, this is something we've discussed uh with both chairs. Um. Chairwoman Joyce, as well as Chairman Stephen Carl, uh, we did have a Zoom about this, um, and it was something we agreed to move forward with. Um, about a couple of weeks ago, we did file the text amendment to Town Council. Um, and at this point, we're at the stage where we're ready to continue to move forward um and along with this process.
Great, thank you very much. Um. Member Crowe, do you have any comments or questions or um, any, any commentary?
No, I, I took a look at everything and, and the minutes in the background, I. Sort of going back to the earlier point, it's fairly unusual to have the two board oversight on the, on the different applications and. The zoning board takes a comprehensive look at it, so I, I would be in support of it. I don't have any questions with the proposal.
Great, thank you. Uh, Member McComey.
Yeah, um. It's been a while coming. I'm glad we're finally there, so uh, I'm in support of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Member McComey. Uh, Member Grove? Any comments?
As stated before, I'm opposed to this. I believe that the whole. Zoning bylaw and the, the application of the bylaw is a community thing. And I believe by not having an extra set of eyes within the community, as opposed to. Uh, staff who may not be within the community adds a lot to. The protections of the individuals. I'm sorry, I'm against it.
No apologies needed, that's um, that's helpful insight, um, and I appreciate that. Uh, do you have anything else, or?
Also, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Member Grove. Uh, Member Kent, any comments or questions?
Um, I've just observed that I've known uh Steve Carl for forty years, and I think he's very conscientious and, and uh. Serious about uh taking on the duties that he has here. Uh, I saw Member Ford's. Uh, comments as well, that he's served on both boards and uh, you know, as a relative newcomer to the uh, to this. Uh, planning board, it's helpful to note that, uh, you know, somebody who's been there on both sides is comfortable with the change that is proposed. So I'm uh, I'm, I'm fine with it to go forward.
Thank you very much. Uh, Member Connolly, any comments or questions?
No questions at this time, thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Um, I don't have any uh further comments or questions. I am in support of. The uh bylaw amendment. Um. The zoning, the zoning board is comprised of five members, local uh members um that have a chance to review and. Make decisions on the applications. I think historically, you know, we've gone back and forth on lots of different uh levels of review from a planning.
Sixty.
Planning board perspective, and I think um, you know, the staff and the ZBA have kind of handled that historically on their own, so it's, I think it's just adding. Adding kind of a burden, especially to some residential applicants, which really tend to be a lot of the applicants that the ZBA is hearing from, so. Um, with that, um, I don't see any public comments. Um. Again, it's a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to ask a question or have any comments on this um? On this applicant, on this, I guess, bylaw amendment? So this evening, we need to provide a recommendation vote, is that correct? So we need, um, so we just need to have a motion, correct?
For favorable recommendation of removal of four oh seventy, yep.
Okay, do we have to clo- we have to make a motion to close the public hearing as well?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there correspondence to enter into the record? Okay, just closing the hearing and voting. Alright, um, I think with that, I'm not seeing any public um comments popping up anywhere. Um, nothing in the chat, no one with their hand raised, so with that, uh, we have this evening participating voting on this. It's going to be Member Crowe. Member McComey, Member Grove, Member Kent, and myself. The um, Cheryl entertained a motion to close the public portion of the meeting, this hearing rather.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
We have a motion by Member McComey. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Member Kent, uh, roll call vote, Member Crowe.
Yes.
Member McComey.
Yes.
Member Grove.
Yes.
Member Kent.
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Uh, Cheryl entertained a motion uh for, we'll entertain a motion on this uh bylaw amendment.
Madam Chair, I'll, I'll make a motion to um. Approve the um zoning bylaw amendment, Town Council Order twenty-one dash oh five four for the removal of the. Braintree zoning bylaw, Section one thirty-five, four oh seven E.
We have a motion for a favorable recommendation by Member McComey. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Member Kent, roll call vote, Member Crowe.
Yes.
Member McComey.
Yes.
Member Grove.
No.
Member Kent. Member Kent.
Yes.
And chair votes, yes.
Awesome.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um. The next item on our agenda is moving into this continued public hearings portion of our meeting. It is 300 Quincy Avenue, special permit and site plan review, file number 21-10. I have actually missed testimony on this application, so I will not be voting. Do I, should I? I think Member Crowe, Vice Chair Crowe, you'll have to run this one. And I will. Do I have to not participate? How does that work? Where is staff? They're all turned off. You're muted.
Sorry.
Okay.
Are you turning it over to Vice Chair?
Is that what makes the most sense?
Yes, yes. You are, we checked, we went back and checked. So we have four people sitting on this hearing. We lost Member Downey. So the member sitting on the hearing is Member McCallum, Member Grove, Member Crowe and Member Kent.
All right. So
If you just want to kill your video and audio.
Yep, yep. So Member Crowe, our Vice Chair Crowe will take over and I'll be back after.
All right. Thank you. So this is a continued hearing for application number 2110. Now we have a new set of plans and the director, would you like to start with an overview or should I?
I'd love to. I'd love to. Acting Chair. So Steve had a few hurdles to get over with some access and really how to make this existing structure work without having go to, going to the zoning board of appeals because it's severely non-conforming. So him and his architect and Paul Marabito is engineer who's here with us tonight. They submitted a full set of revised elevations and a revised site plan. And I can say, everything looks good. I've prepared the draft conditions. They've been circulated to the applicant and to the board. And I think the only things that I really added to the conditions was a little bit more landscaping. He does have the 10-foot buffer requirement along the rare property line, and that's a general business to a residence B buffer for, looking for some plantings in that area. Just to make sure that there is proper screening in accordance with Section 135-702. And then the front yard is a little awkward because there's grass that goes out into the layout. So Steve and the engineer, which makes totally sense, have put landscaping along the property boundary, but that's going to look like it's in the middle of the front yard. So I'm just asking for a little more landscaping to be placed between that front property line and the back of sidewalk so that the plantings don't look like they're in the middle of the front lawn. They look like they're separating the sidewalk from the dwelling. So there's, the egress looks great. There's walkways to get in and out of all of the doors. The parking, two in the back, two on the side. There's room for the barrels. They've really put their, you know, pen to paper or AutoCAD to finger stroke, whatever they do today. And, and I have, I'm in support of this at this point. Obviously with the draft conditions and if the board also agrees at your discretion, I ask that you consider those this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. And who do we have from the applicant who would like to present?
Good evening, Madam Chair and the board members. My name is Stephen May. I am the applicant. So I have submitted the site plan and the floor plans. I believe you have a copy of it. So if any questions, I can answer any thing I can, Paul on the line?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Paul.
Yes. I just state that Stephen has made some changes to the architectural plans in concert with the planning department. But he's also had me, some meetings with the building inspector to make sure that everything's on the plan that the building inspector would be wanting to see when he applies for the building permit. Having said that, those, those changes and other ones we've made in the past few months, I believe has put the plan in a proper order. So we would ask that the board would close the hearing and vote to approve it accordingly. So Steve can start to work on the, on the home.
Thank you. All right. I will start with the planning board member comments and questions. Member McCallum, did you have any comments or questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm happy to see that the applicant has come around and you know, finally met the requirements of, of the staff to make this a, you know, good project. You know, the director had some additional comments about landscaping, which I'm sure you heard. And Mr. May, you know, once this is done, as you know, this is an official plan. So this is, this is exactly, you know, what you have looking forward in terms of building. You understand that, right?
I do understand that. Thank you.
Perfect. I, I think that was smart to visit with the building inspector as well, given that some issues. So I don't have anything else, Madam Chair. I'm happy to see that we've made some good progress. Thank you.
Yeah. And Member Kent?
I would second Member McCallum's comments and happy to see that this is rounding in the form. That's all.
Thank you. And Member Grove, did you have any comments or questions?
No, Madam Chair. Also, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And I just wanted to confirm with staff, we haven't, I, I don't recall at prior meetings, any correspondence from the neighboring property. I don't know the address, Penaro and Leito. I just want to
Madam, Madam Chair, we received absolutely no public comment via email, telephone. Sometimes we'll get a call here and there, but they won't come to the meeting. Absolutely nothing. There are quite a few other multifamilies abutting Mr. Mai's property. Some of them, four families, three families. But yeah, nothing. And then nobody, we've had multiple public hearings and, and nobody. So they're probably happy to see the improvement. I think Mr. Mai, the structure's been vacant for maybe six years. So it's really ripe for some, some attention. So they're probably just happy that something's happening there and they don't, you know, want to, want to jeopardize that maybe. But nothing, nothing in the record.
Okay, great. Oh, go ahead.
I was, I did talk to the owner of 298 Quincy Ave and they, he was happy to, to see renovating this property. So he's, he's actually asking a lot of questions for me, but he's happy to, to, to move forward with it.
Great. Thank you for that update. Yeah. Yes, I remember the first meeting where it was open, talking about how this made a lot of sense to have it be illegal to family, considering the, the past use and the location amongst other multifamily. I don't have any questions. So guess if we, have you had a chance to take a look at the draft conditions?
Yes, I have. And yeah, they, they, they look good to me. And one question about I have is the, the storm water permit. And I did talk to the water department back in July and I received an email saying that for this project, I don't need the storm water permit. That I have an email from July 12.
If I may, Madam Chair, that's correct. Mr. Mai, you, you, your, your project is not going to raise to the level of a full stormwater permit. But you are increasing the lock coverage by almost 20%. So in the draft conditions, I've included the accommodations for a dry well at the end of the driveway or a couple of cold tech chambers, just to make sure that the increase in pavement and the volumes associated with that aren't causing any off-site impacts. So that's kind of a small, small ticket item. Your engineer, Paul, is very familiar with that. You can use a precast unit or you can use a couple of chambers and just have the, the driveway drain into that area.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. And so next, I'd like to accept a motion to enter the correspondence list into the record. And I'm just trying to find the date of it.
November 8th, Madam Chair.
Okay. So I'll accept a motion to accept the correspondence list through November 8th into the record.
I'll make a motion to accept the correspondence.
Thank you, Member McCallum. And is there a second?
I'll move.
Thank you. Member Grove and roll call vote, Member McCallum?
Yes.
Member Kent?
Yes.
Member Grove?
Yes.
Okay. And now I'd like a would accept motion to, oh, let me just double check. There's nobody here to comment on the
You need to vote, Madam Chairman.
Ah, yes. Thank you, Member Grove. Yes. I vote yes. Okay. So I don't see any hands raised, but I will just ask one more time if there's any public comment on this application. Not seeing any, I will accept a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Okay. Thank you, Member McCallum. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Grove and votes, Member McCallum?
Yes.
Member Kent?
Yes.
Member Grove?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. I would accept a motion for resolution of this application unless there's any additional questions or comments from the members or deliberation.
I'll make a motion, Madam Chair, to approve the special permit and site plan review filed 21-10, 300 Quincy Avenue with the conditions as submitted by the staff.
Thank you, Member McCallum. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. And votes, Member McCallum?
Yes.
Member Kent?
Yes.
Member Grove?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you very much and best of luck to you. Happy to see this.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for everyone.
Have a good evening.
Bye bye.
All right. Um, I think that concludes public hearings for this evening. So we can jump back down to old new business. We have on the agenda 100 Commerce Drive, which is Frito Lay site plan review for a minor modification. File number 99-04, Rolling Frito Lay Sales LP. Care of Frito Lay is our applicant this evening. If we could have either staff or the applicant just present what's, what we're looking at this evening and then we can kind of jump into board comment.
So I'm going to, so I'm just going to do a quick introduction. Marion Diffin is here for Dupree Engineering for the applicant. Marion, if you have the ability to share screen or would you like me to, however you prefer to, to do this?
I can, I can show the plan. Yeah. So essentially we have a ten acre site on, in an area that's owned commercial. And the applicant is looking to add a 1,008 square foot addition to an existing approximately 64,500 square foot warehouse. As you can see, probably from here. Pretty big, a pretty big warehouse, pretty small addition. So essentially the applicant wanted to build this warehouse addition without any of the parking or necessarily loading docks or circulation because they have access to shipper materials at the moment. The intention is that the applicant is going to build the addition over the winter while the design for the parking drainage and loading dock is done concurrently. And then they will file for a, a major modification for both of the pavements, the drainage, the, and the addition in the future. Essentially, the, the idea behind the addition is that the applicant is going to be upgrading their fleet of trucks and just needs a, a loading dock that can better accommodate a larger vehicle set. And that's, that's basically it. If you guys have any questions about, you know, the process that they're going through or the design of the addition itself, like please feel free to shoot.
Okay, that's great. That's helpful. Before I jump into board comment, do we, can we just have just an overview of where, I, I know that we have a staff report. I don't know if you want to just summarize that just briefly for us or just summarize where the department is with regards to this application and then we can open it up to board members.
Marion, if you could just unshare the screen and I'll share mine so I can have the staff report up.
Sure thing.
Just share this here real quick. Can everybody confirm with me that you guys can see this?
Yeah.
Okay. So we did a, so we did kind of a very quick, an overview of the, you know, your site plan criteria. So in terms of this proposal, it doesn't actually really have any substantial impact on the, you know, on the surrounding areas. So it was discussed, the reason for this was to accommodate a newer fleet of vehicles that would be taken into account any future major modification that will be submitted. And that this particular minor modification was submitted in order to, due to the access to building materials at the moment. So staff reviewed the actual, you know, compliance with your site plan review findings. And in terms of that, their road staff didn't really have any issues. However, we go through, you always want to have your as-built, you always have surviving conditions. And as part of any special permit and or site plan review, surviving conditions at the, at the minimum are meant to be ongoing, obviously. You know, through their title, there has to be compliance with that going through. So we performed a site visit this past Friday. And as with many of you may, as with many of you may know, surviving conditions typically deal with ongoing maintenance, cleaning, making sure that, you know, things are being done on a regular, on an annual basis with some sort of a schedule for maintenance. And the compliance with surviving conditions really forms the basis for whether or not a modification should at least be entertained. So staff had gone through and looked at some of these surviving conditions and most of them dealt with were pretty standard in terms of maintenance, you know, sweeping all that type thing. So to address one portion, there is a section from the original, from the approved site plan that dealt with. There was a future expansion area that was set aside, which is on the north and at northern end of the property. That's the grassy area and that was set aside for future expansion. However, some of the other surviving conditions, as I've mentioned, deal with ongoing maintenance. Went out to the site and these were taken this past Friday. And really, in terms of the site maintenance, the sweeping for this particular, for this particular one, sweeping was to occur, was to occur every eight weeks. So this is along the northwestern edge of the property. This is along the Commerce Drive area in the parking lot. We can play a game of, of spot the catch base. And this is on the northern edge of the property where the trailer parking is. Particularly down here, this was about three inches worth of, of leaves and sediment and dirt and you know, dirt had that had been previously leaves. And then so ongoing site maintenance has been an issue here, obviously. So there's obviously also some garbage that's being stored. I took a picture of it, but unfortunately the glare, I wasn't able to do it, but there's a fence along the perimeter of the property that looks like it was opened in 1999 and then it was never closed because there's a tree growing through the middle of it. So we also look around here, we've got some curbing that's been destroyed most likely through plowing. And there's also some storage of materials. So typically the issue that we're having here is that once one of these mobile units, air quotes, mobile storage containers gets plopped down, it never leaves. mobile storage containers gets plopped down, it never leaves. Um, and then it becomes an issue of building coverage and calculations. So this is along the, um, the wet, the southwestern edge of the property. This is the fleet maintenance building. Uh, this building was part of the original permit, but really just kind of documenting the fact that it's kind of a, you know, storage area really kind of has issues with the, uh, some of the surviving conditions in terms of keeping the area. You know, aesthetically pleasing. Now, taking into account that this is in fact an operational, you know, uh, commercial slash light industrial entity, that's to be expected, but you know, as it's been stated, you know, really showing compliance with your surviving conditions is really the basis for which um, you know, really even taking into account applications for any sort of modification, but particularly minor ones is really something that, um, you know, builds upon that. So some of the documentation on here, these pictures really just kind of show the fact that, you know, they really haven't uh, been really adherent to their surviving conditions, particularly regarding, uh, you know, sweeping of the site, cleaning of the catch basins. I mean, you can't tell me that that's gonna collect anything other than dirt and debris and everything else that it has been. Um, you know, some of the curbing, uh, these were some of the particularly bad areas. There's also a section on the northern side, uh, that it was obvious that the pavement, um, some of the grass had been taken out to accommodate the staging for trailers to on their way out. Um, you know, so we don't really run into issues of lot coverage and things like that simply because of the size of the site. This is in fact a ten acre property. We're not really having issues in terms of, you know, this particular proposal, looking at it from a microscopic size, we're not have, we're not anywhere near thresholds of having issues with, you know, lot coverage, open space calculations and so on. But really the issue that we have for this particular one is, you know, compliance with your surviving conditions. So really, I'm gonna, I'm made the recommendation that on its face, uh, you know, the addition, the proposed addition doesn't really have the, you know, rise to the level of review in terms of, of impacts, but really staff has an issue with the compliance with the surviving conditions. You know, the board imposes surviving conditions for a reason. Um, and really it's to ensure that you're continuing to do what needs to be done beyond just getting your approval and as-built approval and then it's never done again. So staff, at this particular time, uh, make actually no recommendation on the minor modification, uh, and leave it to the board uh, for you to decide. So some of the attachments I have, um, just gonna go through. So this is the as-built. This is the future expansion area which was shown. The proposal is gonna be located right about here. Uh, this is the fleet maintenance building. The storage trailer is here and here along with some other things. The fencing area, it's right about here is where the fence was opened and probably hasn't been shut since. Um, damaged curbing was around this area. This is the really bad one. Uh, and then this strip here, essentially about probably eight to nine feet wide going from edge to edge is where the strip of grass was removed. This, if you look at it closely, you could tell there was Cape Cod burning there. Uh, but they use it as most likely a staging point for, uh, trailers that have been filled and are ready. Um, you know, ready for, uh, ready for exit so the trucks would come in and do whatnot. So again, there's no recommendation as to the actual modification because of the apparent and obvious non-compliance with some of the most basic of your surviving conditions.
Uh, thank you very much, um, very helpful overview. Uh, Member Crow, uh, do you have any comments or questions?
Yeah, my, um, my main question is really that eight foot grass that was filled in. So where I'm looking at the existing conditions plan along that, I guess that top line. It says concrete sidewalk and so is it under that? Okay, so it's maybe can ease him a little bit more. Okay, so that doesn't go as far as it was supposed to. Is that what that is? All right. Um, so I guess two quest- well, I guess the first question has to do with the loading dock itself. The, I saw that the stairs are going to be demolished or replaced with new stairs. Will that be maintaining the same rear access point? And then everything else will just be the same? Is there any door with the new lot loading dock that's being proposed at this time, or is it just really the slab on the outside?
Uh, to my knowledge, it's just the, uh, the slab on the outside.
Okay, and that rear exit door will remain accessible for people?
Yes.
Okay. And I guess my other question was just if you had any chance to look at the conditions and the draft conditions and discuss the current status of the property with your client. As far as the, the items noted by the Assistant Director.
No, we just passed on the report to them, but they haven't, uh, responded yet.
Okay. Those are my only questions for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Member McCamey, comments, questions?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um. Uh, y- you know, if you, if you don't pay your taxes and you apply for some, you know, permit in front of the board, I don't see why we should, you know, take up your application because, you know, you didn't pay your taxes. So here we have a situation. Um, and perhaps the applicant hasn't had time to come back to us, which is, you know, um, some significant and apparently long-term violations of, of surviving conditions. So I I just sort of asked myself, well, you want me to look at something new for your property? And yet you're not in accordance with, um, the surviving conditions of other special permits. And so it's, to me, it's kind of the same thing, you know, why, why am I looking at this now? Um, I'd almost prefer to table this, uh, until these issues have been addressed. Um, you know, with the staff and the applicant. Um, again, ju- just because I, I just don't think you, you should be allowed to ask to do something new if you're not in compliance, you're, so you're out of compliance. And the other thing I would note, uh, for the staff is that we had a, several years ago, we had another, um, applicant which had a number of outside housing, uh, or, or units, um, housing material and everything else. Um, they weren't considered to be permanent structures. However, I, I did ask the, um, tax collector in town. And I was told that those, um, structures could be taxed. Um, you know, uh, uh, because they've been there so long and they haven't been moved. So I would perhaps if, if the applicant here is gonna continue to have containers that are just there. Um, those, those maybe want to re- be reviewed, uh, for top possible tax violation as well. Um, I don't mean to be mean on this, but again, it just seems to me that we shouldn't be taking up um, projects which are so, you know, uh, uh, out of violation for such a long period of time. So, thank you.
Thank you, Member McCamey. Uh, Member Grove, any comments or questions?
No, ma'am.
Member Kent, any comments or questions?
Uh, just wondering, uh, out loud here, and what would, how long would it take to get this? Uh, these findings, uh, dealt with and rectified. It's, uh, disappointing that, uh, that, you know, this is the way that it has, uh, been maintained, but it doesn't bode well for the future.
I think Marion, I'll, I'll kind of leave that one to you, but, um, you know, some of the, you know, perhaps with catch basins, it might be a little easy to clean, but I think with some of the, um, you know, the curbing and things like that, that may not be as easily rectified as a, um, you know, as catch basin cleaning. But, uh, Marion, I'll leave you to, to answer that as you're probably more familiar with that than I would be.
Sure. I mean, I think that there are definitely some items on there that are kind of low hanging fruit, which could be dealt with relatively simply, like the street sweeping and the, um, cleaning of the catch basins. Um, and even probably, um, you know, removing any of those mobile storage units that have been, you know, sort of, sort of loitering on the site for longer than intended. Um, so I imagine those could be fairly simple to rectify. Um, I would imagine that, you know, repairing the curbing, um, replacing the grass are a little bit um, heavy, have, like, kind of heavier lifts. Uh, so timing for that probably would make the most sense, um, to be addressed with the major modification. But if it was a condition of the approval of the minor modification, I imagine they would take care of that. Um, to push it through before, uh, you know, they started working on the addition. And I don't think that, I mean, curbing replacement isn't it's not, it's not a light list like sweeping, but it's not, it's not as complicated. I think that that could be rectified relatively quickly.
Member Kent, did you have any other comments?
Uh, no, I don't. I don't.
Member Connolly, do you have any comments or questions?
I think it's important that the issues related to the surviving conditions are remedied before moving forward.
Thank you, Member Connolly. Um, I just had a point of, I guess, maybe a question for uh, the department. It seems a bit unusual to have, um, a modification that just shows the building when there is inherent site work that looks like it needs to be modified. I'd be concerned to approve a building without seeing, uh, the further site accommodations required to, you know, accommodate that change. Like this is a new loading dock. It looks like the doors are on planned north side. I, I think that's what those little triangles are, possibly new loading doors. So I think for us to be able to see how the pavement's being modified and look at that, um, I think that's important. I don't, I don't recall. I don't recall participating, um, in an instance like this where we just look at the building and we say we're gonna look at the site later.
To add to that, uh, if I may, that was the kind of the similar commentary that I had brought up regarding, you know, that this was gonna be a piece right now strictly for the access to construction materials. And yet, the, it's been discussed that, well, we're gonna come back with a major modification which takes, which is going to take into account some activity within, uh, this future area. And it was, you know, I had brought to them and said, well, why don't, wouldn't it make much more sense to just include this as one comprehensive, you know, redevelopment, so to speak, have it on as the major modification? And just do it as that really because you're gonna be replicating, you know, replicating efforts. Um, and that was the issue that I brought up and they had said, well, it's because of the access to the construction materials, but then, you know, keep going back in circles like that. So that was, that was an issue that I had, you know, that was brought up at the beginning of this. Um, and really it was the applicant, uh, that had expressed, you know, the applicant themselves had apparently ex- expressed to them that, you know, we have access to these materials now and we'd like to get it done. And then we'll come back later, but that was, uh, that was a question that was brought up and that I had expressed to them as well.
Um, Madam Chair, could I ask a question, please? Uh, and I want to thank the board, um, for all their comments this evening. Um, and I think that um, member, uh, Conley hit the nail on the head. So as the board knows and, and Ken now knows, I am the biggest proponent of if you're not going to do what you said you were going to do in nineteen ninety-nine, then why are we going to let you do something else? Um, I had a difficult time understanding how the loading was gonna function as well. Um, I believe their response was that there wasn't going to be any additional pavement. I'm just trying to understand how they're actually gonna get at it. Uh, and then my question, um, which I'm not sure if this was submitted or not. Um, the engineer is talking about, um, larger trucks that are gonna be coming to the property. So um, have the, has there been any template, uh, running or radius, uh, study or anything to make sure that these larger trucks can actually get onto the property? And maneuver?
Not, not that we've submitted this time.
Yeah, so, uh, you know, I, again, I don't, I don't want to steal Ken's thunder, um, and he's being polite, making no recommendation. Um, but this, this matter needs to be tabled. Um, the outstanding items need to be addressed. Um, if the board, uh, you know, two things could happen. The applicant could put together a schedule. Um, and, and we could move forward on the minor mod at the next meeting. Um, noting that all those other items need to be done before they can actually install the, install the loading dock. Or they rectify those items because they have to rectify them anyways and they have nothing to do with an approval. Uh, they just come in with the major modification like, like, um, our Assistant Director Ken, uh, recommended. So we can look at everything um, at once. And I wanted to just ask a question. Um, this dotted yellow line, um, that you have on the, um, this aerial photo slash, I don't know, site plan. Is that the setback line?
Yeah.
Okay, so if you pan, um, I guess it would be to the south. Um, so we can see the corner. So do you actually have the, the, so you actually have like box trailers and things on the ground? The photos, um, and the stuff that Ken and I witnessed. Um, so those are actually in the setback. I- is that correct?
Uh, that, that's what it appears to be, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much, Madam Chair.
All right, so, um, what? I, I'm getting the sense from the board that we would like to either, um, you know, have a response from the applicant with regards to some of the open, some of the surviving conditions that aren't being met, um, or um, we need to make a motion this evening on this application in some way. So what is, what I guess is, is there a recommended? Um, I guess I'm asking board members too. Does anybody have a, have a, a recommendation or wants to make a motion on this application at this time?
My suggestion would be to just ask the applicant's engineer that's here tonight if they would prefer a continuance or a vote on the application. From my perspective, I, I would be fine if we had a schedule and perhaps, uh, hire escrowed fund to ensure that everything was cleaned up and some sort of conditions that the loading dock was taken out. If the major modification wasn't filed within so much time and approved and some backstops, because I do understand that supplies are an issue depending on what they are this time and that may be a, an overall driver, or it may just be a matter of convenience. Um, but I, I would just ask the applicant what the preference is, whether it be a continue or hearing the feedback from the members, whether you would want an actual vote on the application tonight.
All right, was that, uh, directed at me?
Yes.
Yeah, um, I, I think a continuance would be really helpful so that I could actually discuss, uh, the report with, uh, the client.
All right, so we would be looking to, what would be the date of continuance for this application, um, Assistant Director?
So it looks here, it would be Tuesday, December fourteenth. Um, taking into account the fact that they would need to have materials in by Monday, the twenty-ninth. Um, you know, subs- you know, substant- uh, substantive materials. Um, so that would be at the very, at the very least, that would be for this year. Then we're getting into next year.
So if we were to, if we were to continue this application as is, um, we would just be giving the applicant, um, additional time to review the commentary and, and provide a response back to us. Um, we wouldn't necessarily be committing to any decision beyond that. We would just be giving them another, we would just be giving them more time to keep the application open, correct?
Correct, yeah, essentially what you'd be doing, yeah, exactly. Just giving them some time to decide whether or not, you know. Yep.
All right. Um, so Cheryl entertain a motion to continue this, um, application over to the I didn't write, wrote down when you needed materials by not the date. It's the December fourteen. Yeah. Um. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Crow. All right, um, roll call vote, Member Crow.
Yes.
Member McCamey?
Yes.
Member Grove?
Yes.
Member Kent?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes as well.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Um, all right, so is that, oh, we have the twenty twenty-two meeting schedule. And we have some updates on discussions as well. Sorry. And we have some updates on discussions as well, sorry to jump us through here. So the 2022 meeting schedule, we received that, I don't know if anybody has any comments on that. Um, any conflicts that they know of at this time? Um, if it isn't, I think Chair will entertain a motion to approve this schedule.
Um, Madam Chair, we need some direction on November. Um, the eighth is, uh, election day, I believe this is state election this year. Primary is on September 20th, so we can either go to that Wednesday, which is the ninth, or we can go to the following Tuesday, uh, but the council will meet that Tuesday. By then we'll be in person unless there's an act of God.
Anybody have any comments, any, any, any input feel strongly about Wednesday or Tuesday?
I would think if the council's meeting on that Tuesday, the 15th, then we should do Wednesday, the 9th. If there's any applications that come up where a counselor wants to participate.
All right, so we'll go with the ninth?
Yep. I agree, yep.
Yes.
All right, so do we have a motion to accept the 2022 meeting dates? As just discussed, a modification making the November meeting the ninth?
Chair moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Uh, roll call, vote, member Crowe.
Yes.
Member McComey.
Yes.
Member Grove.
Yes.
Member Kent.
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Member Connolly's along for the ride.
Uh, and, and Madam Chair, and to the board members, if anybody has any conflicts or they know they're going to be out of town, if you can just let me know, um, as soon as you know, that would be great. We just make notes in our agenda book so we can keep track, um, of quorums and mullin rules and, and all that great stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a couple items to update, um, updated discussion on. The first one is the master plan. Um, we hope to keep this on the planning board agenda just so that people can, I mean, I think it's a, it's an important part of what we do. And I think attendees at these meetings may have interest. So, uh, the master plan steering committee, I believe, met last month. Um, just briefly to discuss the, um, second round of, uh, solicitation for requests for proposals to find a consultant to help us with the master plan update. Um, I know Director San Tucci Rossi has been working very diligently on our behalf to get a consultant and reaching out. So, um, any, any further update on that or anything to add?
Um, just that, um, Madam Chair, just that the RFP is out. Uh, we did, I got the bid list a couple of days ago. I believe there was 33 firms that have taken out the proposal. Some remaining very hopeful and optimistic that some of them will be interested. Um, in addition to that, yesterday we held a pre-submission information Zoom. Uh, myself, Jennifer Wadland, Chair of the Master Plan Steering Committee, and Nicole Taub, our Chief of Staff. Uh, we just gave an overview, we had four consultants in attendance. Uh, gave an overview of the proposal, sort of a little feeling, um, from the town and that we're very excited and enthusiastic to move forward, um, through this process. Um, there was one question, um, from the people in attendance. And the question was, can we complete it in 15 months instead of 18? And of course, we all know the answer was, um, blank, yes. So, um, we're really excited, we're trying to just really do our best and put our best foot forward. Um, and I'll keep the, the members posted as, as our chair said, we're going to keep this on, um, every agenda. And we're also going to be posting the Zoom recording up on the Master Plan Steering Committee webpage that we have under the mayor's office. And we've also posted quite a bit of information up there. Uh, we continue to populate that, um, as time permits. Uh, Ken and Louise, um, have done a great job of getting together all these documents from, you know, ones over here, ones over here, ones on the shelf, one scanned, dust this one off. Um, in getting those all scanned literally and, um, and getting them up on the website. So I welcome, um, the board members to take a look at that. Uh, and as always, we're here for any questions, uh, and comments, um, about the process. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Um, do any board members have any comments or questions about that so far? Nope, all right. Um, the second item, um, update is the potential zoning amendment, the inclusionary housing bylaw.
Yes, so, um, this particular initiative, um, was brought forward by, um, Council Sasha, I'm not sure if he's still here with us or not. Um, and myself and the assistant solicitor have been looking over the language, uh, and working through the language and as directed by, um, Mayor Corus. And we have some, um, really nice language, uh, here. And I've circulated that to the board with sort of, um, a few little other housekeeping things at the end that we need to do to kind of clean this up. Um, and I had said to Chief of Staff, I said, well, let me talk to the planning board about it. Um, and see if the planning board is willing to sponsor it. Um, I have offered obviously, um, um, the professional support from this department. Um, if the board is willing to support this, um, that's great. If not, we'll have to find another sponsor. Uh, but regardless, I will be putting this into, uh, the appropriate format, uh, to submit to the town council, um, for an amendment, uh, to the zoning bylaw. And I'm looking to submit this next week. And looking to have the public hearing in December. So this evening, I would love the support of the planning board in this initiative. Um, I had brought forth an inclusionary zoning bylaw in, uh, 2005, to be exact. Um, and it's, it's troubling that we have not been able to, to get something passed, um, to date. But we have something here. Uh, it's a prime time to get this on the books. We've been doing our part and working with applicants to get affordable units, um, outside of an inclusionary bylaw, which is, which is something that a lot of communities are not able to do. But let's get something on the books, let's have this equally applied to all housing developments. Um, and if the planning board is willing to sponsor this, um, if you could do that in a form of a motion this evening, um, that would be great. If you don't want to sponsor it, um, that's also okay. I will report back to the administration, uh, and we will find an alternate sponsor. Thank you.
Thank you, um, member Crowe, do you have any comments or questions?
Thank you, and I, I took a look at it and I do support and think that there's a need to add affordable housing and make that a component of projects here. But I'm not sure, taking a look at this particular bylaw, whether or not I would be in support of it. I think that there's other mechanisms that may get a little bit more attractive to developers to try to incorporate affordable housing. And there are already some fairly tight margins on getting multifamily housing onto properties. And particularly if it's a, uh, a not very dense development, and that can mean a lot of things. But I'm not talking having a particularly dense 56 units. I'm just talking about having a few more units per acre than what is allowed. So I, I, you know, I have some concerns with that. I think that the 40R mechanism has some state incentives for doing affordable housing that's available to the town when it goes under that. And there are some other type of smart growth strategies that I would like to see a little bit more than this particular bylaw. And I'd, you know, be happy to sit down and have a more direct conversation about what could or could not be. I'd be happy to participate in that process. But I, I don't know that the way that it's drafted, that I could vote in favor of supporting it.
Madam Chair, can I ask a follow-up question? Um, thank you very much for your, for your comments, member Crowe. Um, are you referring to something, I've, I've had a lot of experience looking at, at bylaws. Um, so it kind of could be twofold. One is we just allow for a greater density in the multifamily districts. Or if, if you're willing to do affordable units that you get a, a, a density bonus?
Correct, that would be more of the latter.
Okay. Okay, thank you for those comments, I just want to make sure I'm, I'm getting it clearly, thank you.
Member Crowe, thank you very much, um, do you have anything further at this time?
No, that was it.
Okay, member McComey, any comments, questions?
Well, I, I like a number of, uh, member Crowe's thoughts and, um, sounds to me that perhaps, uh, we could have some, you know, more discussion about various options and things. I, I just think on this one, um, we should, uh, be thoughtful because we went through part of this before when we tried to, you know, update the zoning bylaws. And I think there was a lot of confusion, um, and, um, pushback on various issues and, uh, you know, misinformation on other issues. So I just think we should, um, you know, be careful and, you, you know, maybe, um, take some time, listen to, listen to other people, you know, certainly member Crowe has a lot of experience in this. Um, and I, I, I for one would appreciate, appreciate her input. Um, so, I just want to, if, if we're going to do it, let, let's, let's really have thought it out so that we'll, um, you know, it'll pass, I guess. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, member McComey, uh, member Grove, any comments or questions?
Yes, ma'am, I'm certainly open to hearing any other suggestions. Melissa, to, uh, section B2, I'm a little concerned on this specific document about the 36 months limitation. I think that'd have to be tightened up. Beyond that, I have no other comment.
Um, all right, member Kent, any comments or questions?
Uh, my comment is that for some reason, I did not get to this or see it or was caught between other pages, so I haven't studied it. And I apologize for that, but I'd, perhaps Melissa, I could stop by and when I actually study it and provide some comments. And that would be, that would be shortly.
Um, all right, member Connolly, any comments or questions?
I, I agree with the other members that, um, it would be important to have more time for review.
Thank you. Um, all right, so it does sound like the board is interested in learning more or looking at this more. I'm curious, kind of what is the process? If we were to say we wanted to sponsor something like this, um, or what kind of, I know initially, I think you had said, um, you were looking for maybe a buy-in for us to maybe sponsor it. So I don't know if that's the first step. It seems like, I don't know if we're ready to make that decision, but I'm just kind of curious of the overall process if we were.
Yeah, so, and it's funny, I was going to say, you can, just because you agree to sponsor it doesn't necessarily mean you have to vote for it. I mean, I know that sounds a little silly, but, but that is true. So there's a few things that could happen. We can pause here, I can go back to our internal group, um, and discuss these comments. Um, you know, it is important to note that the people that have voluntarily, um, done, uh, inclusionary units, um, have received very, very significant density bonuses. These people are not building six or seven units an acre, they're building 20 to 30 units an acre. And these are, uh, for the Fitzgerald Project on Independence Ave, Frasier's Projects in the Square. Um, and, and interestingly enough, both projects that we've received, um, mostly positive feedback on, frankly. Um, so we can pause, we can talk internally, I can share these concerns of, of taking them all down. Um, we could potentially, um, pull in, um, member Crowe, if the board is comfortable with that, to get some of her input. Um, I understand what she means, I understand these components that she sees in other ordinances that are missing from this ordinance. Um, or we could agree to sponsor it and get it in and have these discussions while it's a, an active hearing. Um, you know, I think, I think I'd, I'd probably pause here and, and let me go back to, um, you know, our administration and discuss these concerns. And, uh, they, they come up now, they're going to come up at the hearing, you know, they're going to continue to come up. Um, so let's see what we can do internally about that. Um, obviously, we won't be making any, um, December meetings, you know, we do want to, um, we want to get something, you know, advertised because, um, once it's advertised, it, it applies. So, um, I will go back, uh, with these concerns. Um, they could find another sponsor to put it forward. And if that's the case, then we would have this commentary, um, during the hearing. Or they'll say, you know, get where your board members and, and, and let's get, uh, member Crowe in here and any other members that, uh, as long as we don't have a quorum, um, I would suggest the Chair, um, and talk through these issues so that we can get them into a draft that then the planning board is willing, is willing to sponsor.
Do you have any other sponsors in mind? Who would normally sponsor something like this? Would it, would it be?
So the, 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 there's only a few groups that can, that can do it, and that's defined in the general laws. So the zoning board of appeals, the planning board, um, 10 registered voters is what, which we had when we did the animal modifications, the animal care. Um, our charter allows the mayor to sponsor and the town council can also sponsor. So there are other entities, um, again, I, I just kind of went with the planning board because the planning board is the one that reviews these projects and really kind of has, uh, the most expertise. So I'll have some discussions tomorrow, um, internally here. Um, and then I will update the board. Um, obviously, I don't think, unless, you know, you want to go forward and, and sponsor this, but I wouldn't think that that, it doesn't sound like the board's ready to do that this evening.
I guess it sounds like we, I, I think it sounds like there's interest to sponsor it, but maybe we're not sure if we would be ready to sponsor this particular version. So I don't, I don't know how, if the, any other board members have input on that. I do think as a board, we have a unique set of backgrounds and experience and, you know, it would maybe make sense to come from the board if, if, if we thought that, we felt that way. Um, you know, I, I guess I'm kind of wondering like what, you know, if we were, you know, to kick the can down the road, so to speak, you know, we would miss out on an opportunity to participate in a certain level, so.
No, not at all, not at all, member Joyce, uh, the planning board is the ultimate participator in this. The reality is, is that, uh, any amendments to our zoning bylaw require a recommendation. So whether this is sponsored by the mayor, the council, anybody, and regardless of the sponsor, the planning board holds the public hearing, uh, on the recommendation. And the planning board can vet something, um, one, two, three, four, 12 meetings. I mean, things stay at the planning board for a very long time. Um, they typically don't release those until they're ready, well, a zoning amendment, um, typically don't release those until they're ready, um, to go to the council. And I think the council relies heavily on the planning board and their expertise, and especially in drafting, uh, in drafting zoning. So I don't think there's any missed opportunity, we're involved, whether we want to be involved or not. But I do think there's an opportunity to provide this insight, um, that I've heard this evening, um, from the board to the administration. And maybe they'll pause and, and sort of, um, consider that and loop that in now. Or they very well could go ahead with another sponsor and then we just do it during the public hearing. So regardless, the input's there, it's just kind of like, is it pre-hearing, during hearing, et cetera?
Okay. So do you need, do we have, do you have enough direction from that? Like, do you need anything from, any?
No, I think, I, 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 I think I'm basically, what I summarize this evening will be what I summarize. Um, I've got some pretty good notes here. Um, and I can, um, I'll update the planning board on, on those discussions and we'll just go from there.
Great, thank you. That's great. Um, did, did I interrupt someone? No. In-person meetings, um, I don't, I don't know when this is going to happen. We have the ability, I think, to participate remotely, um, through, uh, the beginning of next year. Um, I did learn, which I didn't realize this, I don't know why, maybe I'm living under a rock, but, uh, the ZBA is meeting in person, so, um, our town ZBA is meeting in person. Um, so yeah, I don't know, um, how other board members feel, um, with regards to in-person versus Zoom, uh, meeting. Um, but happy to hear, happy to hear perspective. Member Carl, how, what do you think?
I think that there is a inefficiency to the virtual meetings, both from the applicant's costs and then from the ease of being able to review the plans. And even public participation makes it a little bit easier to join on. I do think there is, there is definitely benefit to being in person also. I think you get a little I think you get a little bit more of a full discussion. So I, I kind of go both ways, but with the uncertainty of, of different things happening with COVID and, and everything else, I would sort of lean towards keeping it virtual for, for the time being.
Yeah, well, we only have one more meeting this year, so. Member McCallum, what do you think?
Haven't submitted the holiday schedule yet.
As far as you know, you only have one meeting.
Daryl's on beverages.
Yeah, I, I think, I think I, I'd agree with Member Crowe, I'd, I'd keep it virtual for now.
Member Grove?
Yes ma'am, I'd keep it clean for Christmas, we can start the beginning of the year.
Member Kent, what do you think?
Well, I'm old enough to have got my booster shot, so I'm, I'm good either way. I'm not, I'm not worried, I know that town council's meeting in person. So, you know, I'm, I'm more leaning towards in-person as soon as possible.
Member Connolly?
That's, either version works for me. I, I think there's a lot of benefit to being in person, but the current, you know, health conditions and concerns are something to look at, especially heading through the holidays and into the winter months. That might be a, a concern for us. And then maybe in the spring, I think it's through April that would be able to, to meet online and then could transition then.
Yeah, and I think there is, you know, there is a sense among other community, other local communities that are already making moves to, to have public participation virtual and then also in-person and like how that ties together. I think it would be helpful to, you know, maybe have some discussions at more of like an overall town level as to how the boards, I think it is a little weird to have some boards in person and some remote. So maybe, maybe in the meantime, between now and when we have, when we decide, if we decide on our own to change our format, we'll have maybe some direction from the mayor's office or, you know, another, another level in town, town hall. So we can just play it by ear still, I think, just learned how to roll with the punches here in the last year or so. So we'll stay remote, we'll reassess. No change there, I guess, for now. I think that's the last item on our agenda this evening, so we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
Nobody wants to leave.
Motion to adjourn.
All right. It's so early, nobody knows what to do.
What am I going to do now?
Go get comfortable, Jen. Because it was your first night.
All right, does everyone, everyone's an eye on the adjourning? All right, thank you all for your participation this evening.
Thank you, everybody, have a wonderful Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Happy Veterans Day, if we have any veterans here, thank you, good evening.